So if council members, when they arrive back to, if they can turn their cameras on, so I know everybody's here, or I know when everybody's here. All right. Uh, so Hector, are you ready? Or Lucero, are you ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Uh, so let's go ahead and call the talent. City Council Regular Meeting of November 2nd to order at 6:48. Roll call, please.
Council cook.
Here.
Counselor.
Here.
Councilor Gretter.
Here.
Counselor Pesezo.
Here.
Counselor Parry Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you, Hector. Uh, the next item on the agenda is meeting accessibility. Uh, Lucero.
This is a question for the public. Do any attendees need this meeting translated into Spanish? We ask you to please raise your hand. Este es una pregunta para el público. Alguien necesitará la reunión interpretada en español. Por favor, alza su mano, and we will watch for any raised hands.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is additions and corrections to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Anybody hands up? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to community announcements. Staff, do you have any community announcements?
Before Hector jumps in, I would like to do a quick announcement. Um, in celebration of Lucero Martinez, who is here as our city recorder in training, um, Hector is currently teaching her all the ropes and she will soon be taken on the full mantle of city recorder. Lucero, we're so happy to have you here in that capacity. Um, welcome, welcome to the team officially as city recorder.
Thank you.
All right, Hector, I'll turn it over to you.
If everyone could see some of the, uh, I did a screen share. If you can see the, uh, upcoming community events, can I get a thumbs up? Okay, great. So we're here as a list of some upcoming community events that are based in talent. Um, as everyone knows, this was Halloween and Day of the Dead, and both holidays seem to be very popular and increasing in popularity. So today would be the last day of most recent celebration at Cerebrus Coffee. Here in Talent, uh, they had a celebration, uh, to honor the Day of the Dead. Uh, from the, most of November. On Thursdays, it will be a free farmer's market hosted by Rogue Food Unites at the Oregon Shakespeare Festival Production Facility on Talon Avenue. And, uh, I'll repeat that once more for, um, uh, which I think is really important to understand that this is a free farmer's market for anybody who, who needs, uh, great, good nutritious and local food. Uh, Councilor Greiter, see you raise your hand.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just had a quick note. Um, I think it's Thursday, the third for that. The November 4th, 10th, 17th, I think it's the third, 10th, 17th.
Uh, counselor, that is my, my mistake. You are correct. That is a Thursday, the third. Oh, apologize. I'll, I'll make sure that the notice we sent out on our social media reflects that.
No problem. Thanks for including all those dates.
You're welcome. November 5th, those are local goods, uh, pop-up market on Wanger Plaza. And, um, our venerable Talent Garden Club will also have a book talk on that same day in the morning at the Talent Library. And a reminder that November 8th is Elections Day. We've been putting information out on our, on our Facebook, social media and website to remind residents that that is the, uh, the date and the ballots have to be submitted on that date and postmarked by that date. And then November 11th, um, City Hall will be closed for Veterans Day, and those are our community, um, upcoming community events.
Thank you so much, Hector. Are there any other community, uh, events? I just have one. Um, on November 19th, at Community Center, Coliseum Foralesa will be the hosts of the first L markup. Mera credito, my Spanish is, is rough. Um, and, uh, and, uh, that will be from five to nine. And, um, it's going to be vendors and food trucks and, um, and music and, and great food and lots of fun. So, uh, looking forward to that on November 19th. Anybody else? All right. Get back to the agenda. Uh, item number five is community heard on non-agenda item. Uh, Hector, do we have any speaker request forms?
Uh, Mayor, we do not have any speaker requests forms.
Is there anybody in the audience?
And we, we do have nine audience members.
Okay, does anybody in the audience wish to speak? And if so, please raise your hand. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is item 6.1. It's a public presentation on the Rogue River Watershed Council Presentation on the Flood Plane Project. Um, staff report?
Yeah, I'm excited to welcome up John Spees, who is the Executive Director of Rogue River Watershed Council to share about this awesome flood plain project that they got grant money to move forward. And our, um, you know, I can't do any justice to it. So John, I'm going to hand the microphone and presenting over to you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, a couple order of business. I am not the executive director. I'm just a project manager. So I don't want to steal that thunder from my boss, Brian Barr. Uh, then also, uh, Joey Howard, who has his hand up, hand up, and then attendees uh, is going to co-present with me. So if we can make that possible, he's going to come in halfway through the presentation. So I will share my screen. Um, I'm, I cannot share my screen.
John, go ahead and try again.
Okay. There we go. Thank you. You see that? See here.
I can see it.
Okay. I'm gonna try to figure out how to share my screen and not have that bar. And there we go, slideshow. Okay. Still see it there? Okay, well, thanks for having me. Um, as Jordan introduced me, uh, my name is John Spees. I'm a project manager with the Rogue River Watershed Council. And I presented to the council, I think, back in April, maybe. Uh, so this is a follow-up to that presentation. Um, also on the call is Joey Howard with Cascade Stream Solutions. He'll be co-presenting with me during this. So this is a project called, we're calling the Bear Creek River Mile 19.0, the Talent Flood Plane, uh, Project. Uh, River Mile 19.0 is a reference to the mouth, from the mouth of Bear Creek up, upstream to where we are. It's about 19 miles up, give or take a little bit. So you can see on the image there, um, let's see, I'm trying to hide this. Um, that's the project area. That's Lynn Newbury Park. So you probably all recognize that. Uh, and we will talk more about that as we move on. Here's another view of this, uh, kind of a more, uh, a view after the fire there. We've got the project area is in this polygon here, this yellow polygon. Talks about side channel one, two, and three. Again, we'll talk more about that as we move on. Uh, really, the overall goal of this project is to provide uh, the necessary ecological components in the form of improved water quality, stream processes, and aquatic and terrestrial habitats that build a proper functioning ecosystem. And for any project like this, uh, this size or even smaller, there's multiple phases during the development of the project and implementation. So if we think back in time on this one, this project, the concept started being developed, uh, in middle of 2021. We went into a little bit more intensive development of the project, project scoping. We saw grant funding, partner support, et cetera. We were awarded the grant in August. Then we go into the permitting phase through this next winter. We bring on additional, what we call the restoration kind of review team. So currently, we have partners on board in this process. We've got Army Corps of Engineers, Oregon Department of State Lands, Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Jackson County. We also, also have uh, United States Fish and Wildlife Service, United States Forest Service, all participating in this, this part of the process, finalizing those designs and helping us through the permitting. Then next spring, we roll into contracting and implementation next summer. But with any project, and especially one of this scale, a critical component is the outreach, community outreach. And so Crystal Nichols, who's my coworker at the Watershed Council, came up with this outreach strategies for this project. So she laid it out into five initiatives. And we feel that, uh, kind of a robust outreach strategy is critical for this project because of the high visibility, where it's located, and our overall goals of the project. So this will be, if the outreach component will be implemented from here all the way through into next year and possibly on. So of these initiatives, I would say this meeting and what we're doing tonight kind of slots into that initiative three, presenting project overview, objectives, and progress to stakeholders, which the city of Town is one of those. And we envision having a meeting like this, either via Zoom or in person, at least every couple of months through implementation. So our project objectives are these, increase, increased Bear Creek flood conveyance, capture overbank flows to recharge the floodplain, restore native riparian forests, improve terrestrial and aquatic wildlife habitat, and then improve public safety and access. How we get to those, we'll talk about as we move on through the presentation. So as I said, a project like this is, is multiple phases to get to implementation. This outlines kind of the early design process. So some initial data was completed, uh, I think earlier in 2022, late 2021. That included, uh, acquiring a bunch of drone data that Joey led. Other baseline data collection that's ongoing right now, just two weeks ago, we were out with Counselor Clark, some, um, staff folks, Eugene Weir and Caitlin Detwiler of the Freshwater Trust for a project partner on this, collecting riparian vegetation inventory out on site. We were also doing existing infrastructure surveys, collecting additional data for the design level survey, et cetera. So multiple, uh, baseline data collection ongoing. So we completed that concept design, uh, with that restoration review team that I kind of mentioned. We're working to finalize the final project designs by the end of November, early December, which that'll lead into then the permitting phase of the project. And then we'll work through Jackson County permitting going into early 2022. So with that being said, I think we're, I'm going to turn it over to Joey right now, and he can take it on.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay, so as John mentioned, we're looking at, uh, having a, uh, project that provides many benefits. Uh, primarily from the Watershed Council's perspective, we're looking at improving, uh, the habitat for, uh, aquatic organisms as well as increasing and restoring, um, native vegetation that to large part was dramatically impacted by the fire. Uh, so we're doing this in four ways. We're, uh, increasing the floodplain connectivity. And what that means in just plain English is, uh, making it such that when the stream flow comes up, it engages and gets on the floodplain more frequently. Right now, because of many, reasons, it has become incised or narrow. Uh, and so the floodplanes don't get active very often. We're going to increase channel complexity. And so basically, what we're trying to do is create just complex flow conditions under low-flow conditions where, um, there are differences in, uh, water velocities and water flow. And then, uh, in doing this, we'll be improving water quality. We are going to be, um, where possible, tapping into and, uh, receiving water so that, to the extent possible, we'll try to, um, to treat that water, although it would be treated with, by basically just retaining it and having vegetation there. And then also, uh, increasing and preserving recreational opportunities, uh, for people there and bird watchers and, and cyclists and whatnot. So if you could go to the next slide. Back one. Forward one. Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, you went to slides. Okay, so, um, this is the stream gauge data from, uh, the, uh, Bear Creek Gauge, uh, near Ashland. And so it's fairly representative of this, uh, reach. And what I'd like to show here is on the left side of the graph, um, what we're looking at is the period from October 1st through June 30th, where, uh, temperatures are, um, are hospitable for, uh, primarily salmonids, uh, or salmon. Uh, and so essentially what you can see on the bottom is the percentage of the time during the year. So just this 10% comes up and, and you come across, and you can see that that's roughly, uh, you know, 110 CFS. So basically, 3.3 days or whatnot of the year, on average, we get that much flow. So you could see that these flows are quite low during the majority of the time. If we look at the annual peaks, uh, over here, we can see at about 1,000 CFS, the median flow, so that means that, uh, over half and under half, well, that, that median is about 10,040, um, CFS. And where this comes into play, if we could go to the next slide, is when we ran a hydraulic model and we ran it for several flows. And so this flow right here of 321 CFS, uh, occurs about 14 days during that period from October 1st to, uh, to June. And, uh, what we see in the red on the left side of the graph is that's depth. And I'm sorry, that's velocity. And what you could see in those areas that are, um, basically above about three feet per second. That's pretty fast for juvenile fish just to be hanging out. And so you could see through there, there's not a lot of good habitat. Um, and so this flow occurs fairly frequently and on average, and when it exceeds this, then, you know, fish have a hard time, uh, living in this environment. And so what we're going to try to do, if you can go to the next slide, is-
Joey, Joey, if I could just chime in real quick, uh, if anybody doesn't know, uh, CFS is cubic feet per second and is a measure of how much water flows down a stream. I just didn't know if everybody knew that.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, so at any rate, this is another flow. This happens about three days per year on average. They could see the conditions get worse and there's not really any area where the fish, uh, floodplain that the fish can access. And so what our project will do, one of the objectives, will be to create that floodplain. I don't have figures showing what the project model results will be, uh, to share with you today, but, um, but we will certainly provide those in the near future. And so where you see these colors, what in our project conditions, you'll see that expand, and those expanded areas will, uh, be areas where fish can, uh, persist as well as where we'll have water getting up onto the floodplain, seed dispersal, and just improving habitat conditions. Uh, John, if you can go to the next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I see a hand up.
Joey, I just have a quick question from a basic standpoint. So juvenile salmon do not like fast water and they do not like deep water. Is that right?
Well, they do not like fast water, um, because if you, if you think they're probably, uh, you know, anywhere from a half an inch to, you know, a few inches long. And so they struggle to hold their position. Um, what is a good thing is to have a diversity in flows. So like in this photo right here, you can see where you can, there's a riffle, and so that will oxygenate the water. And then certain, uh, macroinvertebrates, uh, little bugs and whatnot can hang out in there. And, uh, so you want a diversity of conditions. Um, and you also want the ability for the water to go out in the floodplain. And so the fish can rest and, um, they just aren't going to require, they're not, they don't need to be as energetic. Uh, and so they can get fat and then go out to sea, uh, later on. Ideally, that's what they want to do. Or I mean, that's one of the life cycle parts of that. So, uh, the short answer is having a diversity of flow, but having high flow is not great. Uh, in terms of depth, you want a variety of depths. Uh, pools are nice. Um, and then, uh, shallow areas are good as well. So you want a range of conditions. And in that one graph, we don't need to go back to it or those figures. Those areas are quite shallow. So it's not to say that fish won't hang out in areas where it's, you know, half a foot or less. They will. But they also need to escape from predators. And so they need areas where they can go deeper, also where you have, uh, say trees or down vegetation where they can get in there and hide from the predators, uh, as well as feed. Does that answer the question?
It does. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, uh, in here, and if you could just tap the key forward once, um, what we're looking at here is the orange arrows represent an existing side channel. And so what, and this is just one example. I just wanted to pull something out. So this would be an area where we would be enhancing that connectivity to that side channel. And what that means is we would be lowering the elevation of that, which is, it's an existing side channel. Um, and then if you could tap the key one more time. So we would remove these barriers between the primary channel and the side channel. Uh, and that is an example. And then you can also see, actually, my cursor's in the way, um, but, um, if you could tap the key one more time, John. And then we're going to protect higher valued vegetation. So it's hard to see in this photo, but that one tree, that's a cottonwood there that managed to survive. And, uh, so in areas where there are cottonwoods that are living, we're going to preserve those and we're going to, uh, excavate around them and not disturb those. In areas where there are trees that are standing, that will leave some, uh, where they're not a hazard. Um, and, uh, and that would be a benefit to wildlife and, and birds and whatnot. And then in other areas, we will take them down and use them on site, uh, as in-stream wood. Uh, that would also go along with wood that we're going to import. Um, uh, John, if you could move to the next slide, please. So an example is staying at that one site of what we're going to do is we would, that solid line represents a finished grade. So we would be excavating material. And that material, we are finding places nearby and it looks promising that there might be some sites nearby that we can, uh, move that material that would be outside of floodplain. And so basically, we're increasing the conveyance area or the area where flood flows would move. And so we will have a slight reduction in flood levels because of the project. Um, we will be doing a letter of map provision, and so we will be updating the FEMA, uh, water levels through this area. But, um, we will, that is one of our primary objectives, is not to increase water levels and where possible, excavate so that we can reduce water levels. Um, next slide, please. So in this photo, uh, we can see where, um, the creek is encroaching upon and eroding into the existing bike path. Uh, erosion is not a bad thing. It is when it goes into the bike path. And so in, in an area like this, we'd be, if you look at the bottom of the screen, uh, we would put, be putting in large wood structures to protect that bank. And then we would also be excavating on the opposite side to create conveyance areas so that we can take pressure off of those areas. So that would be another, uh, benefit that we would see from this project. Next slide, please. And then this is just kind of a rough schematic. This air photo was one that, uh, we took, uh, this photo was taken in December of, uh, 21. And, uh, all these, uh, all the data that we get, once we, uh, QA, you see it, it will be available to the city of Talent, but basically we have, um, like 1.2 centimeter pixel resolution on this. So it's extremely high resolution and we'll be continuing to, uh, monitor and use these data. Uh, we also flew for LiDAR, and so we have, um, high resolution topographic data. So what we see, and if you could tap the key once, John. So these black lines just represent where we'd be excavating site channels. Some of this work will be revised just based on, uh, permitting and, uh, where we have access for disposal materials. So we're going to balance those volumes so that, uh, we can find a home with it for it within the existing budget. Next slide, or not slide, but tap it. And then these hatched areas are areas where we were, um, uh, constructing floodplanes. And so basically, we're, uh, expanding that area where we can, um, have flood flows go and to reduce water levels as well as remove non-native, uh, vegetation and, uh, replant with native vegetation. And what is not shown on here is where we put, um, wood habitat structures. We have a, um, kind of a, a idea of where we're putting those, actually more than an idea. Um, but they're just not on that slide. Um, and then next slide, I think it's, it's you, John.
All right, thanks, Joey. Um, yeah, let me turn my video back on. So yeah, uh, Joey went over those design processes and actions that we're going to do, uh, kind of a review of the timeline that I talked about, the OAB grant. So this, for those of you who weren't on the April meeting or don't know, uh, we were awarded, applied for a grant from Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board that was unique to areas that were affected by the 2020 wildfires. Now, meet a fire made this area eligible. And so we, we applied and secured that grant award in August. It's for about $675,000. Um, and that'll fund this project, uh, with some additional in-kind match from, uh, other grants and partner organizations. So again, that was awarded in August. Uh, we will be working through the permitting right now through March of '23. We will continue to refine the project logistics, final designs and planning over the next couple of months. Uh, we will go into contracting early next year, uh, with local contractors that actually complete the work. And then we envision implementing next late July, August into September. We, we think this is about a six-week project. Um, just given the, uh, the scope, uh, and the complexity of it. And then again, community outreach will be ongoing through this whole period. So I want to give a little plug to what's called the Bear Creek Restoration Initiative. Perhaps some of you have heard of that. This project kind of fell out of that, came out of the BCRI and the collaborative group that makes that up. So the BCRI was developed in 2018 in response to fires that we were beginning to observe with higher frequency along Bear Creek. So several organizations came together, created that partnership and wanted to come up with a plan and vision to improve the conditions in and along the creek. And that slide kind of outlines what the, what the future vision is for that group. You know, the devastating fires kind of put some additional pressure on the BCRI group to address those community social and natural resource concerns found within the Bear Creek corridor. So the intent is to work with public sector, social service organizations, restoration practitioners and public safety groups to really work together and to improve, again, fish and wildlife habitat, community safety, combat invasive species, increase water, increase and improve water quality, improve fish and wildlife habitat, and really encourage the establishment of native plants along Bear Creek. So the BCRI is kind of the, the how this project was developed in a way through those partner organizations. And there's ten priority project areas throughout the Bear Creek watershed. And we recently secured a grant to develop a website for the BCRI. We held a meeting today with the larger group. And right now we're planning project and community tours. We're working to identify and create strategically designed and implement additional projects like this through the Bear Creek watershed. So I encourage you all to check that website there, bear creek restoration dot org. And Jordan, I would expect a an email or a call from Crystal Nichols Outreach Program Manager at the council to see how the City of Talent can partner in that. So with that being said, I'm wondering if you guys have questions from the group? And I'll stop the show right now.
Any questions? That's a sign of a good, oh, there we go, Council writer. We almost got away.
No, mine's a very basic question. The presentation was really thorough. Thank you. And I liked that it included actual pictures of the area. I just had a question about the outreach. I know you mentioned your coworker, I think, was handling some of that. And you mentioned like this meeting being part of that. Is there community outreach as well or what? Or do you have plans for the outreach piece? Or is it just attending the council meetings with this presentation?
No, no, it's, it's pretty comprehensive plan. So I can, I can share that. I'll send a PDF of this presentation to Jordan, I guess, and she can share it out with the counselor or counselor Clark. But we envision multiple community tours, inviting the community to visit the site. We envision actually offering those during construction next year, you know, safe, barring safety concerns, et cetera, but offering that up. We see this as a great educational opportunity for the community to learn about these type of projects. So outreach strategy will include these public meetings, public tours, newspapers, social media, touchpoints from Crystal developing those. And then also I would again encourage you all to look the bear creek restoration dot org because that outlines a bunch of these kind of outreach strategies that we're trying to use. But it's, Crystal's actually going to go apply for additional funding specifically to implement the outreach plan for this project. And I envision actually developing some interpretive signage along there as well that we'll put up in response to this project.
I mean, not to belabor the point here, but as we were out there, we got a lot of interest from people walking by. You know, probably because we had like a four-foot drum flying around. But besides that, they were also interested in just what we were doing. People, it was close to many people's hearts out there. So that was really positive. The other thing that I'd be interested in participating in is if we can get some work with the schools. And if there are some teachers that are interested, be more than happy to to try to get rid of my jargon and, and to, you know, share with the children and learn from the children, see how they see things. And I mean, one thing that I find incredible out there is just how the disturbance really brought up the cottonwoods. That's one thing I didn't mention was how we are also selecting areas where we're going to be taking this source material for the vegetation. And we're identifying those areas as well. There's areas where we have complex vegetation communities where we're going to be protecting those. And so just kind of sharing with that our philosophy and if other people have ideas, you know, obviously it's not designed by committee, but, but you know, certainly understanding, respecting and learning from everybody.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Penomarif?
Yeah, I just wanted to say y'all have very cool jobs. But I, and I just really wanted to emphasize, I think the school, you know, before it gets too cold, you know, the school tours with the school kids would be just awesome.
Yeah, I, I like that Joey brought that up as well. I'm passionate about working with young people. And I also have interns from SOU and Joey and I thought about having an intern next year to stand out there, educate the public during the construction period. So.
And so if, Counselor, if you or there are some people that we can reach out to, like you say, to kind of start that process, really like to do that. I just don't have any connections with the talent school.
Yeah, maybe I can talk to Jason and we can come up with some contacts to reach out to.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that great presentation and thank you, Council Jason or Council Clark for, yeah, for keeping, keeping us updated along the way and bringing us to this point. We really appreciate your great work on this project. And again, what a great presentation. That was was really exciting to see. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, everyone. I'm sure we'll see you in a couple of months again. Up to date.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
All right. That was really a great presentation. So the next item on the agenda is the city, city manager reports. Seven point one is city manager report. And then go ahead and move into seven point two, Jordan.
Great. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. You know, my deep apologies to the council and to the public. I, for a comedy of errors, was not able to get the agenda packet out on a reasonable timeline today. And I want to recognize how that impacts you all and the work you do as well as helping keep our community informed. You know, I want to, you know, point out that our goal is always to get that packet out by the Friday before the meeting at the very last minute or the very least amount of time, the Monday before. I've been having struggles in meeting that goals lately largely because of multiple staff that are transitioning into their roles. We're having time with training, taking over the Tura duties. There's been a short-term capacity as we wrap our arms around that and better understand what needs to be done. And then to the back-to-back meetings that happen in the beginning of the month have made it challenging for time. These are temporary barriers as we get our flow and process down. I do expect these delays not to be occurring in the future. Really expect January to be back on that Friday schedule with the random Monday thrown in for potential vacation times. So I want to apologize to you all and I want to let you know what I will be doing if this does come up again in the next few months. We'll be publishing a preliminary packet that holds all the information for time-sensitive decisions that do have to occur in the upcoming meeting. And then for topics that are not time-sensitive, let you know what those are. For example, tonight, all the resolutions we'll be discussing are not time-sensitive resolutions. I hope to have a vote on them by the end of the year. So my recommendation tonight will be to discuss those topics and then push the vote to a future city council meeting, just to give the public time to review and provide feedback as well. So, you know, wanted to just let that be known. And Mayor, if you have a question on that topic, and then I will hear any of the others. Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One is if you need any tools or additional, you know, additional capacity, we'd love to hear about that. And then the other thing too is if, if there is a need to change the back-to-back Tura council meeting schedule, if that would lighten things up. I know that we'd be, maybe we could put that on other or you, you know, you're welcome to bring that up on other tonight and we can discuss alternatives if that, if you think that would be helpful.
Wonderful. Thank you. Really appreciate that support. There are a couple of just agenda topic items I want to say out loud for my city manager report because it is, you know, really relevant to potential audience members. The fire hardening grant program is a program run by Jackson County where folks who are having to rebuild their house, their business can receive grants to make their, their rebuild more fire resistant. This grant can apply to people who are going to rebuild or have already rebuilt and would like reimbursements for any cost you have made. So far, 204 different properties have applied for this grant in talent. They've been able to process eighty-six so far and those eighty-six account for $3700,000. So there's $5 million still available in this program. The county wants to get that money out. So if you are rebuilding or have already rebuilt, strongly encourage you to visit the link in the agenda packet to apply for that program and, and get some dollars in the pocket for fire resiliency. As I, as you all know, we have put up temporary delineators on the West Valley View project to help folks see those bioswells and avoid entering those bioswells with their vehicles. They have worked so far. We have, knock on wood, not seen any cars go in the bioswells. We will leave them up for the remainder of November, just to make sure that this is an effective solution. And if it is, we will move to more permanent delineators out on those bioswells. Right now they are a temporary setup with what we had on hand in the moment. Yeah, Mayor.
I just wanted to ask Jordan or maybe mention with the rest of the council in a discussion we had about, you know, the functionality of the bioswells, we were talking about the idea that once the vegetation is taller, we believe that that would, so do you see? Do you see a, like a point at which you would actually need to remove the delineators once the vegetation is all in? Is that, or is it going to be a combination of things? Do you even know yet?
You know, I would say not know yet. The expectation is once the, the plants are fully grown and that there'll be very visible bioswells. You know, that will take several years for the plants to become fully mature.
Okay.
And so, you know, at that time, we can reassess to see if those delineators can be removed and where. Yeah. Though I'm not a plant expert on growth rate, so hopefully it happens sooner than my expectations. Thought you all know that our FEMA application for cleaning up hazardous fuels in the Bear Creek corridor is still being reviewed, which is great news. It is not. It has not been rejected, though admittedly, I was walking down the Bear Creek corridor with the FEMA representative showing them the project site plan. And John Speas rolls up with twenty, you know, FEMA and agency folks. So I felt a little less cool, just, you know, us three. How started working on water conservation efforts with the regional partners from other cities. Our TGM revisioning project, this is the Bear Creek corridor, Highway ninety-nine TGM project where we're working with the community to re-envision how that area can be used for multimodal transportation and mixed use. We will be kicking off the public input process with a survey that'll launch on November fourteenth as well as an online community meeting on the seventeenth. Both the survey and the community meeting will be in English and Spanish, and we will be promoting those that folks know about them and can attend. There will be at least three other community meetings throughout this process as well. So stay tuned on city communication channels. And then lastly, we are working with the county to help update the natural hazard mitigation plan for the area, which is what makes us eligible to apply for FEMA grants as well as helps identify our priorities for reducing national hazards. Yeah. Counselor, a question?
Yeah, on the TGM grant, when this was first discussed like over a year ago, I think I remember that there was some talk about having committees where stakeholders would encourage like working folks to participate and there would be stipends. Do you know, did that ever happen?
Yes. So there are three different committees for this project. One is the project management team, which is, you know, all of the jurisdictions are involved. So ourselves, Phoenix, Jackson County, and ODOT and DLCD. And we just do all the logistics of the project. There is a project advisory team, which is all those folks who are specialists for a specific topic in the area. So Rogue Valley Sewer Services is on that committee, ODOT is on that committee. Think of things, people whose jobs is professionally involved somewhere within that corridor. And then we have a community advisory committee, and this is the committee that they do offer stipends for. And these are for community members that live in that Howie and Dan corridor or work in that Highway ninety-nine corridor with a focus particularly on folks who either bike, walk or bus as their main mode of transportation.
Great. Thank you for that update.
Yeah, of course. And then I'm going to flow to I made it, but I wonder where I put it.
And you're, we're starting to lose your audio a little bit.
Okay, if you fully lose me, I'll
Yeah, it's garbled.
Okay. You know, Mayor, if you don't mind, I would love to hand the microphone over to you to give a quick Tura update while I just put my laptop in so you all can hear me. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. My goal is to write regular monthly reports just on Tura activities for what was decided in last night's meeting. Oh, thank you, Dave. Dave Loman just delivered the laptops. It will be a faster transition. I'm going to go dark for a moment here. Mayor, can you hear me better when my video is turned off?
Yeah, what I can say is what I can hear you better now. So if it is because of your video, then that's the case.
Great. Hopefully I wanted to share with you all just an update on Tura. I know the council here is very aware of Tura activities because you are the board or president at last night's meeting, but I'd love just to give a quick summary for the public of what decisions were made at Tura and to start integrating that regularly into our monthly meetings. Just to help folks stay informed. So last night at Tura, the board went ahead and is considering a new business revitalization grant, which would be a grant to help support businesses to kind of upgrade their look, fix fire damage and improve accessibility and markability. The board went ahead and approved the, in Kate, in the, oof, I'm sorry, I'm trying to multitask and it's not working well. Mayor, if you don't mind me for a minute, it'll make it a smoother transition here. One second.
Well, I'll fill a little airtime by saying that as a clarifying point for those folks who may not know, we are still operating as the Talent Urban Renewal, the original Talent Urban Renewal Agency. And these are projects that have either been revitalized from years past or or just, you know, updated. So as we work towards the completion of the original Talent Urban Renewal Agency. Hector?
Pardon me, Mayor. I do see that a hand's been raised and we were, we went from the city manager report to the Town Urban Renewal Agency report. And I'm just wondering if that raised hand was related to either the current or previous agenda item.
So, Mr. Lowe, if you are interested in talking about the the Urban Renewal Agency report, go ahead and take your hand down now. If not, if you leave it up, we're gonna bring you in. Okay. I'll get to you as soon as she's done with her report. Which is the order of business. I will also take this opportunity to welcome Commissioner Dutterer. He is the liaison from the county to talent, and it's good to see you, Commissioner. All right, looks like she's coming back.
All right, can you all hear me a little better?
The volume is a little lower, but it's more clear.
Okay. Perfect. Well, apologies all for that technical difficulties. I will go ahead and just jump back into the Tura recap. So at last night's tour meeting, the Tura Board reviewed the great progress of the beautification grant program and discussed a revitalization business program under the board's initiative implementing that will be brought at the next board meeting in December. The board also decided to renew the lease with Rogue Action Center for their provision of a fire relief center out of one or two home street. And the board gave an, received an update on the Gateway Transitional Housing Project and that transition for property management there. The board did approve that if needed, that the urban renewal can take possession of those trailers while that partner is identified and the and the transition occurring. And then last but not least, the board went ahead and approved to have grant funds used to winterize those trailers to help the families living them stay warm and dry throughout the winter. So that was the quick Tura update that will be being included once a month, just to help keep the community informed of what's going on through that agency.
Great, so we had a hand up in the audience from Chris Lewis. Let's go ahead and bring him forward. And Chris, please state your name and your city for the record.
Madam Mayor, Chris Lewis over here in Phoenix. I did want to ask a question about the previous topic as to how many cars went into the bioswells, and if there's any financial impact to talent for that happening. And that was it. It wasn't really about the renewal. It was about the bioswells and the amount of cars that inadvertently went into it. That's it. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, we can bring it up at other if if that's unless you want to address it now.
You know, I'll just address now because it's a quick and easy answer. We know of five cars that went into the bioswell that required a tow truck. You know, folks are welcome to submit claims to the city. We submit those claims to our insurance company to review. And so I am not sure where any of those claims are, if they have been submitted. But thus far, no, the, no financial impact to the city thus far.
Jordan? Right. So that concludes your city manager's report and your tour report. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. And that includes the city council meeting of September seventh, October fifth and October nineteenth, and these are the written minutes. Important to also know that the audio is already up, right, Jordan? Yeah, okay. And then, and then eight point four is acknowledgement of the Parks and Recreation Commission minutes is every, from September sixth. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Any comments or questions? Hector?
Pardon me, Mayor, just like to add that the audio and the video are both available immediately after a council meeting through your YouTube channel.
That's really great. Thank you very much. So if there aren't any comments or questions about the minutes, I'll entertain a motion. Council Perry Miller?
Thank you. I move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Clark?
Yes.
Council Penamov?
Yes.
Council Greider?
Yes.
Councilor Pesizo?
Yes.
Councilor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is item, I'm sorry, let me get back. I was reading something. Item nine point one, which is consideration of hybrid meeting policy. Staff report?
Okay, thank you. So as we prepare to return to in-person meetings in December, we are looking to also have those be hybrid meetings where Zoom is possible. A draft hybrid meeting policy has been presented to the city council, and the city council has provided feedback at two different opportunities. And so we have gone ahead and made revisions to that draft policy based off the most recent feedback, as well as had our city attorney review the policy and make any recommended wording and language changes as well. So I want to emphasize the changes that have been made to this draft hybrid meeting policy. So while we encourage and expect city council members and the mayor to attend in person, Zoom is possible. We do have a limit to five times per year for Zoom use unless special consideration is granted by council. We did add in a request that if a council member is going to use Zoom to provide staff with forty-eight hour notice so that we can prepare materials for you all. There are just some language clarifications through the city attorney's review. Oh, I see what happened now with my, my Tura updates. Ignore that last bullet there in the list. I want to emphasize that there were some comments made at the last city council meeting discussing this policy that I ended up not incorporating in the draft hybrid meeting policy language. And that was really related to COVID nineteen. And I want to share with council the reason why I did not include it. Because I didn't want to complicate this hybrid meeting policy to have it intertwined with COVID. Because I would expect and hope that council continues to have hybrid access if COVID is ever to leave our lives in the future. The other reason I did not include it is because we currently have internal city policy that is based on Oregon Health Authority guidelines and OSHA guidelines, whichever one is stricter at the time, that we follow as city procedure and process. So since we already had a policy in place elsewhere, as well as to create just a true hybrid meeting policy, I felt it was appropriate to keep those two things separate. I will share that our policies for COVID are masks are always encouraged, never required and never required to be not worn. I should not required to be not worn, to clarify. And we follow guidance is offered by OHA in terms of spacing, as well as when we should leave from having in-person meetings. Any questions I can answer about the draft hybrid meeting policy language?
I have, yeah, go ahead, Council Penamov?
Well, not actually so much a question, but I, this is based on, we did get some feedback from resident Derek Volkart. And I'm seeing where that is in participation by the public. Where it says in the second sentence, those who wish to speak must register in advance. And I think previous conversations we've had about that is, I think that that probably wants to be, are encouraged to register in advance since it does imply that if they don't, they can't speak, although we go on to explain how they can. So I guess that's my one comment. I'd like to see the word must removed and replaced with something along the lines of are encouraged to. Or whatever you think.
Yeah, so I did briefly discuss this. You know, following the the procedures that we've been following for this past year, is it's at the mayor's discretion if she would like to look to the crowd to take comments from the public that have not registered beforehand. So really, what in this scenario, what it would look like would be if speakers want to be heard for sure, they must register, but there is the opportunity at the mayor's discretion to have folks speak as well. If council would like to change those procedures entirely and not have registration be a requirement down the road, I would be comfortable changing that must language.
You're muted, Mayor.
All right, Council Penamov, did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, so Jordan, you're talking about changing the language in another area of the council rules or this. Is there a companion area that you want to clarify? Or just is it all right here that we would have to fix, or is it another place in the council rules as well?
Yeah, I would want to do a quick review of the council rules before I answer that, unless Dave is comfortable weighing in at this moment. And Dave, you can speak through my microphone as well.
Can't find the document.
Oh, yeah, we're doing a little online document hunt right now to be able to provide clarity on that question.
I just want to let you know, Jordan, that you're muted, but you're, we can also kind of hear you. So there must be two microphones in the room, and one of them is still working, that poorly, but it's working.
There we go. There should be no more echo now. How's that sounding?
Are we still waiting on a document search?
We are searching right now to pull up the council rules and procedures for Dave to give that a quick review. But if we want to move ahead while he is pulling up that document.
Let's do that. So I'm gonna take another question. We can always go back. Council Clark?
Yeah, I I don't recall anything in the council rules pertaining to signing up to speak by five PM that that came, I believe that came sometime in the early part of the Zoom Zoom-based meeting era. And I'm not, I, I'm trying to remember where it came from. But I guess I would I would prefer not having the word must in there because if you're late, if you're at work and you're reviewing the agenda and you want to come into the meeting and you're thinking, man, if I can, you know, if I can get there before this agenda item, I'm gonna speak, and you walk in and you realize they've not quite gotten to it, and you fill out a form and you take it up to the city recorder, then you've got a chance to speak and so I wouldn't support, you know, including any language that would discourage someone from deciding to speak anytime before that agenda item comes up in the meeting. That would be my preference.
Hector?
If council would would like, I found the council rules I can screen share.
Yeah, go ahead and do that. I have some recollection of where this is coming from, so.
Perfect, section six. So if you look at section six D. And then if after viewing sixty, you go ahead and look at six B. So the, the way, sorry, for all the way that we've written the hybrid meeting policies is to parallel what you see here in section six D and B. You know, D being signing up with a speaker request form, but then B, the presiding officer, always have the discretion to calling our folks in the audience. So what I'm hearing from council is that we'd like to remove the must from the hybrid meeting policies. What I'm also asking for is if we do that, would we also like to amend the council rules and procedures to not require speaker request forms to be filled out ahead of time?
Before we take any more questions or comments, or before I go do a round, I just want to say that I, I recall from live meetings why we had the rules the way they were. And it gets really, I, I've been at meetings where it gets really challenging as the speaker request forms are coming in in last minute to to speak on items and sometimes, you know, in, in, in the midst of a discussion. And I, I, I don't have any heartburn with the terminology must, as you saw in the rules, it said must before the agenda item. So as long as the speaker request form is in before the agenda item. The reason I don't have any heartburn is because it is the discretion of the presiding officer to take somebody who came in at the last minute and didn't have an opportunity to, and so I, there's value to that language that I just want the council to consider when they make their decision about how they want to proceed. I, the strength of that language, I recall was useful, so. It's been a long time since we've been in a live meeting, and that's that's how I remember it. Anyway, let's go to Council Penamov and then Council Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. That was really helpful, Hector. Thanks for having that that up there. Just reading the very first part of that section. The, what I took from that is that members of the public speaking at talent public meetings are always at the discretion of the presiding officer. That there, there's no inherent right to actually speak at a public meeting, and I think this is state law, and I think it's also according to our charter, I believe. Now, we, you know, our custom is to you know, to encourage that participation and and to allow it, but I don't think there's any difference about that if they sign up, they have a right to speak or not. I think it's always at the discretion of the presiding officer. And that they, but if they are going to speak, they have to identify themselves in terms of name and address and that sort of thing. I think that that's where the requirement is, so. And I, I guess I'll ask Dave if that's, if that makes sense or not.
So do you support the language? I guess I'm asking you.
Yeah, so, so that's why I say it felt like that we were losing, you know, some sort of discretion on the, on the part of the presiding officer, and I think the way I interpret the language that we've seen tonight and also what I seem to remember is that that discretion is always in the hands of the presiding officer, but if people speak, they must identify themselves. And whether that is five o'clock the day before or just before the agenda item, I think we're saying we want to be open to that for for people deciding at the last minute that they wish to speak.
Thank you. And Dave, I just want to let you know that I go in order of the hands I see. And so if you hear something earlier in the conversation you want to address, just make a note. So that I saw the next hand was Counselor Clark, and then Dave will take you.
Yeah, I just acknowledge Counselor Penamov's comments, and I think that's I think that's a well-designed rule that the chair has to have discretion, you know, in order to carry out the functions of the business to be undertaken at the meeting. But that said, I think we all value public participation. So I just want to say that I would, I could accept the word must in the policy if it was must fill out the form or contact the city recorder before the agenda item comes up. And so just reflective And so just reflective of the council rules as they are, that I, that I would support.
Dave?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, Counselor Penamriff is correct that there is no requirement for public input at any council meeting. And I had understood the original version of this policy where it said somebody wishes to speak will need to. I simply changed that to must to be a little clearer. And in my understanding, and it may be wrong, and maybe Hector can fill this in, but was that for hybrid meetings, there needs to be some kind of arrangements ahead of time so that a person can, can be invited to participate and be one of the official parties to, to that agenda item. But I may be wrong about that. That was part of my thinking with the word must, if you were going, if you knew you were going to wanting to be test, testifying that it would help everybody if you could let them know in advance, but that was not the only way you could participate.
And you know, here's the thing, as long as I've sat in the seat, I'm pretty liberal about making sure that everybody is heard, so I don't I, you know, I, I, but I've also really appreciated when there was some some ability to kind of control how speakers came in, because sometimes in live meetings, we didn't get all the information about that that was collected or again, speaker request forms were coming up in the middle of a discussion, so it made it easier. All right. Dave, your hand is still up and then Hector and you want to add to the conversation, Hector?
Madam Mayor and Council, I do have Oregon Public Meeting Law ready to share with the council if need be. Cued right to public attendance. Madam Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Thank you. If you've catered up, let's, let's go ahead and take a look at it.
I believe what we're looking at would be here and here.
Yeah, I mean, do we have the, I, this OR, this is part of ORS. Do we have the ORS number? It might be good to just put it in.
I can pull the ORS and send it to council immediately following this meeting.
Yeah, if anybody feels like it's necessary to, do we, Dave or Jordan, do you feel like it's necessary to put the ORS number in this? Okay. All right, great. Just validating that that is, the business meetings are reserved for the, the business of the city, but our policy is to accept public testimony. So, Jordan?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, I'm just going to do a live document on screen with you all for where I heard potential amendments being made to the policy so that we're all on track and know what we are or would be voting on. If that works for the council. So I heard and sensed a bit of agreement around section three. Can you all see my screen? Am I screen sharing with you all? The, the struggle with the laptop life here. All right, how about now? Okay, perfect. So this section right here before 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting, it would be a parallel the language from the city council rules of procedure, which would be before the agenda item. Okay, great. Any other potential amendments or changes to the policy that council would be interested in?
Council Clark?
Yeah, if they're, if they're in person, I assume we're still going to have paper forms on the desk and that they will hand those directly to the to the city recorder like we used to do three years ago or so. So, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Anything else? Well, I want to thank the staff for being so patient with us as we, as we try to perfect this this policy. We are passionate about making sure that we have good community involvement and sometimes that takes a little extra time. We've always known that ORS makes it clear that we don't, we reserve the right to have business meetings for the business of the city, but we've always been very, very passionate about including community. So it took a little extra time. We thank you for your patience. With that, if there's no further comments or questions, do I have an, can I entertain a motion? This would be as amended. Oh, it says that in the motion. Council Clark?
I move to adopt the hybrid meeting policies for city council meetings as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the hybrid meeting policies for city council meetings as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call please.
There was a little.
Pardon me. Council Clark, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I, I appreciate staff's work on this, both on the policy and the logistics, the technology. This is going to be, this is going to be a new era for public meetings and talent and it's going to allow the flexibility that that we want. And I really appreciate all the work that's going into this and I'm really looking forward to seeing how it's, how it works in the moment. So, thank you.
Okay, any other deliberation? Seeing none, roll call please.
Council Clark?
Yes.
Council Penamriff?
Yes.
Council of Greater? Council of Prestizo?
Yes.
And Counselor Pari Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. And I echo the gratitude from Counselor Clark. Really appreciate also the the research you all did to getting the equipment and setting up the, the room. That's, that's really great. All right. So the next item, as I scroll back up to my agenda is going to be item number 10.1, consideration of police vehicle purchase. Staff report?
Yes, and I will let council know this is a time sensitive topic for tonight. So Jen is here as well to answer any questions you folks may have about this agenda item. So in this year's budget, we have set aside $115,000 for vehicle purchases, but as was clarified during the budgeting process, and we would come before council when we were ready to purchase a vehicle to help describe what vehicles we are going for. Staff is currently working on creating a vehicle replacement schedule so the city can stick to a regular maintenance and update schedule. However, an opportunity has come up for a used police car up in Salem right now that our police chief has looked into and our sergeant has looked into that is a great deal can help stabilize our fleet, particularly during a time where procuring a police car is very difficult to do. And if you are able to procure one, it will take a long time to receive one. So now that we are fully staffed in our department, we're hoping to stabilize our fleet and make this smart purchase of a used 2016 Ford Explorer with a up to value amount of $17,000. Jen, is there anything that you would like to add about the specific vehicle or what this vehicle would mean to the police department?
Good evening. Well, it'll be a stopgap for us for now. The problem we've run into is that you used to be able to just pick up the phone and say we're ready to order a vehicle and now there's windows of ordering that you have to get involved in. And unfortunately, the last window of opportunity that opened, I didn't realize that it would be so short and it was closed. So we're facing, you know, supply issues. I was told to purchase a Chevy, the last time the window, order window opened, it was one day. So my hope is that you know, our fleet is aging, it's, the miles are getting high and, and this purchase would help us to maintain what we currently have until we can, like Jordan said, come up with a schedule that is more consistent for us to maintain our fleet.
I have a question of the chief.
Yes.
You know, first of all, $15,000, you guys must have scoured every good deal in the state to find something apparently so great. And $17,000 would be to add the cosmetic repairs and the the outfit. And that, that would include putting the equipment and the logo on. Is that is that going to, you know, I, I know you must have reviewed this, but is that, A, the first question I have is, is that going to be adequate to fully outfit the vehicle? And then my second question is, is in that draws down the $115,000 to $98,000, does that leave you short? Should a purchase come up? I mean, would, would we be looking at appropriating funds later or should we be appropriating funds now? I, I'm just asking really just from curiosity.
Yeah, so the last vehicles that I, I contacted agencies in the valley who have recently been able to purchase vehicles and a vehicle plus upfitting the vehicle is roughly about $60,000 for the entire package. And so you know, when my request came in during the budget process, it was for you know, to hopefully purchase two vehicles to keep up with our aging fleet and with those being hybrid as well. You know, the last vehicle we purchased was a hybrid and I do definitely see some savings in that. And so, you know, our goal is to continue purchasing those hybrids, but it, it'll, you know, if approved, it would give us enough to buy one vehicle, but in reality, I think when you see a presentation in a few weeks coming through, you'll see that you know, what we have is, is works, but it is getting old and starting to cost us a lot in maintenance. Are we just going to get lucky in finding this vehicle? And, you know, it's through a vendor that we've used in the past. And I've looked at several different places and really it is, it is a good price. I mean, unfortunately, it's, you know, an older car, but the miles are not patrol miles, so it has less wear and tear on the car.
Well, I'm glad that that sort of satisfies my curiosity that there's more to come in terms of solving these issues. So good. Anybody else? All right, well, this came before us and we've had an opportunity to discuss it previously. So are we prepared to make a motion? I'll entertain a motion. Council Penamriff?
Thank you. I move to approve the purchase of the used 2016 Ford Explorer, including decals, radio installation and associated repairs up to the amount of $17,000.
Second.
We have, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the used 2016 Ford Explorer, including decals, radio installation and associated repairs up to the amount of $17,000. Is there any further discussion? Council Penamriff?
I just wanted to say good deal and well done, Chief.
Anybody else? Great. Roll call please.
Council Clark?
Yes.
Council Penamriff?
Yes.
Council of Greater?
Yes.
Council of Prestizo?
Yes.
Council of Pari Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. And hey, Jen, I'm looking for a truck. So if you can help a sister out, a deal like this would be great.
I'll get on it. Thank you.
So much. Okay, the next item is item 10.2, resolution on systems development charges increase. Staff?
All right, thank you all. And I want to just remind the council, the next upcoming three agenda items, these are not time sensitive items and they are a bit meaty. And so I'm really hoping to use today to present them all to you all to provide some food for thought and we'll recommend that we push a vote to our next meeting if that is the will of the council. So this topic really addresses something that was raised two study sessions ago. And, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Sorry, no, sorry, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. And it is about keeping our system development charges apace with inflation. So system development charges are charges that we use to help pay for capital projects. And there's this very specific formula around how those system development charges are calculated and then used for projects. Per our ordinance 725, we, the city can do regular adjustments to these STCs to make sure they're keeping pace with the changing costs of construction. This just helps us be able to make sure projects get done even as prices rise. City typically does these adjustments annually. The last SCC adjustment, however, occurred in 2019. So what this resolution does is it go ahead and adjusts for that construction cost inflation that has occurred between March 2019 and March 2022. The ordinance does specify exactly how we will go ahead and calculate that cost adjustment, cost adjustment for STCs. Though there is some general wiggle room in terms of the fact that, you know, it calls for Pacific Northwest Pacific Index, that specific index is coming out of the city of Seattle through the one spelled out. And there's also a 20-city average index. I originally wrote the resolution using that 20-city average index, though after consulting with our attorney as well as with the city of Ashland, who has a very similar ordinance in place, my recommendation is actually to sift to the Seattle index. I will say that this jump is higher than we typically experience with the inflation that's been going on in the world. And so our recommendation is that we apply these adjustments over a six-month period so that it does not come as an abrupt shock to folks who are in the building process. So the way that would look is we would apply the increases half, starting on January 1. Oh, sorry, I'm using the wrong, so I get for using two computers. So what you see here is what the impact would be January 1, 2023 and July 1, 2023, using the 20-city average index versus the Seattle index for what our STCs rates are. I'm going to go ahead and hit next so you can see how it would impact our other STCs. Oh, once again, the wrong keyboard. There we go. You know, I do want to clarify that since the city is going through a current capital improvement planning process, once that capital improvement plan is adopted, we will recalculate our STCs. If that recalculation occurs before July 1, 2023, the recalculated STCs will take the place of these increases to the STC adjustments at the time that they are adopted. Is there any questions as to how these calculations will come about, the process or what it's for? I'm happy to address tonight.
Council Penamriff?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to check my memory. These are, these were waived for folks who are rebuilding. So, yeah, so it won't affect folks rebuilding, but this is new development, essentially.
Correct. This is only for new development and will continue to be that way.
So with that, just in the abundance of caution, I want to declare a potential conflict of interest. I own property in the Burn Scar and I know that this is accepting that, but because it's accepting that, I'm, I'm declaring that.
And thank you, Mayor, for declaring. I do want to clarify for all folks the fact that folks who are rebuilding do not have to pay STCs is not a specific rebuild policy. It is just a city policy that occurs anytime, for example, if someone buys a house that already has a water meter as part of that property, we do not charge them to additional STCs on top of that water meter. We consider that water meter having been already invested in. And so STCs do not apply. we do not charge them to additional STCs on top of that water meter. We consider that water meter having been already invested in, and so STCs do not apply. If that helps clarify things.
Overly cautious. Um, Counsel Penamara.
Yeah, I thought, you know, uh, I'll be overly cautious as well and, and just declare the potential conflict of interest. I do have property in the Burn Scar and am in the process of rebuilding.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Jordan.
Would council be interested in pushing this vote um, to the next council, city, city council agenda, um, or would you all like to consider it tonight?
Well, for myself, I, I um, based on previous experience with um, a resolution of this kind, I, I would feel comfortable moving forward if the board feels comfortable moving forward, because it's not, uh, it's, it's sort of repetitive type action that we've taken in the city before. And um, and we did, we haven't done it during the, the last couple of years of um, you know, during, while we've been in this recovery, but um, uh, I, I, I do want to say, um, I, I feel less confident about the upcoming items. So it's sort of a qualifying, um, because they're kind of new and complex, more complex. Um, but I'll leave it to the board. I feel comfortable with moving forward, because I've, I've um, adjusted the schedule before in, in my experience. Um, Counsel Penamara.
Yeah, if, if these three resolutions aren't time sensitive, um, I frankly, you know, didn't have a lot of time to uh, spend thinking about it. I might have more questions that just aren't occurring to me. If, as long as they, they won't uh, uh, impact, impact the city, Jordan, um, I'd be more comfortable dealing, voting on all three of these the next meeting, but discussing them now, so, so we make sure we understand and see if any questions come to mind later.
Does anybody object to that? Um, so you'll uh, be able to uh, take this item uh, into account and, and do some more research for the next couple of weeks. If we're gonna move on to the next item then. So uh, one last time, is there any questions that anybody has before we move on to the next item? Counsel Penamara.
Yeah, the other thing that I'll be researching and trying to understand, because I know you talked about it before, is when we're looking, Jordan, is when we're looking at the um, the capital improvement plan, so many of those items didn't, uh, were not relevant to STCs. If I recall, they had NA in that, that column.
You know, that column is a placeholder column that we just hadn't updated yet since that was a draft. We were only looking at project prioritization.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I, I apologize for not clarifying that.
Oh, all right, that's helpful.
We'll see more of these, be able to apply to capital projects.
Okay, so that's, and that, and that'll probably be, you know, in a couple of weeks is I'll, I'll probably ask you to um, to uh, you, you explained it really well that um, the projects help justify um, the STCs. But how, you know, individual projects relate, if some apply and some don't. Just to, and you know, a rule of thumb around that, um, to just help, help the understanding of the process would be, would be great.
Absolutely, and I, you know, it's flashing in my head now that that'd be a great study session topic um, for when that does come up with the capital improvement plan, because it is a very complicated but fascinating uh, a process.
I look forward to that.
Jordan, I guess I do have one question. Can you tell me why you chose the Seattle index over the twenty-city? I, what is, what's the thinking there?
Yeah, so for several different layers, you know, the first layer being the ordinance specifically calls for a Pacific Northwest index or a Pacific Northwest specific index from the ENR, the Engineering News and Review um, indices, which is a subscription-based index. And so Seattle is the only city that is in the Pacific Northwest that ENR provides an, a specific, uh, individual index for. So that's the reason number one is it most closely aligns with ordinance language. Reason number two is really, you know, what the West Coast experience in terms of construction costs is very different than what, for example, the middle of America experiences in terms of construction costs. And so when you look at actual construction costs that we're experiencing on the ground, we align much more closely with Seattle than we do with the twenty-city average. Typically, they're fairly similar, um, except for these two years where we've seen COVID has such an impact on everything. Seattle index has shown a, a twenty percent increase in inflation over those two years, whereas the twenty-city average is a fourteen percent. Um, and we are definitely feeling that twenty percent impact here on the West Coast. Um, I did double-check this with Ashland. That is the same reason that Ashland uses Seattle index, because I feel it's much more representative of costs here on the ground.
That's great to know, really great to know. Uh, Counsel Penamara.
Yeah, just to, to make sure I'm tracking, um, and what we were looking at of the index was a, a percentage increase, right? So for those of us who are thinking, well, it's so much more expensive in Seattle than here, it's, but the, the movement, um, the increases are increasing at the same rate, and that's what we're, and that's what we're um, paralleling. So that's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and this is less happy of a factoid, um, but we are seeing, um, you know, and this is through word-of-mouth experience of folks of um, contractors on the ground. Because of the fire rebuild, because of the level of demand, we are actually potentially seeing higher increases in prices than what Seattle index is showing for these last two years. Yeah.
Great, and um, just want to say really quickly for the record, uh, I got a message from Counsel Prestizo and he's having a family concern and had to leave the meeting. Um, okay, uh, any other questions? Um, well, thank you uh, again for that great report and the level of detail and attention to um, our actual impacts is important. Thank you. Uh, item number ten point three is resolution twenty-two dash zero five one dash R on affordable construction excise tax for Almeida fire rebuild. And um, again, um, I own property in the Burn Scar and there's a potential conflict of interest. Counsel Penamara.
And I own property in the Burn Scar and potential conflict of interest.
Go ahead, Jordan.
Great. Um, and I will share it with the council. You know, we had had a discussion under other business last meeting or two meetings past. We're looking for a way to help us remind any potential conflicts of interest statements by council members. This is, you know, one way I'm testing out as a way to just remind folks on topics that um, are likely to carry potential or actual conflicts of interest.
And.
So we'll see if this works.
Yeah, this is fantastic and I, I love it. Um, funny thing is I didn't, I just didn't see it just now. Um, but um, will you, if I, if I, you know, if I happen to bypass it, I'm just inviting everybody to make sure that we stop on, uh, and and check in on that. It's not always easy to remember for every single item, so. Um, all right, go.
We saw it subconsciously.
Jeremy. Um, all right, uh, Jordan.
Okay, so in twenty nineteen, the city adopted an ordinance that established an affordable housing construction excise tax. So this is a one percent tax that is applied on the estimated total improvement values for any new building or new improvements going on that require a building permit. Um, the intention of this tax was to really help um, incentivize and encourage affordable housing to be built here in talent. Um, when the fire happened, to help lessen the financial burden on families and business owners who had to rebuild after the fire, city council waived the affordable housing CET for rebuilds. And specifically, um, they waived, you all waived, um, the affordable housing CET for the improvements that existed prior to the fire. So say a house decides to build an ADU that didn't exist before, the affordable housing tax does apply to that ADU portion, portion of the rebuild. So this practice, so this motion was made in February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. At that time, what the city did is they then refunded um, any affordable housing construction excise tax that had been charged to rebuilds prior to that date. And then since that date, we have been applying that to any burned property regardless of ownership. So this um, exemption from the affordable housing CET parallels the Phoenix Town School District CET exemption policy for the CET that's charged to help the school district projects. The school district project um, exemption expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Our exemption currently has no expiration date. And what this bar on the, on the thing is to remind you from our study session, these are the estimated fees of what would cost if a new fourteen-hundred square foot single-family home was built. So the yellow shows the estimate for the affordable housing construction excise tax, which is about twenty-six hundred bucks. And the school district excise tax, which is that orange bar, about twenty-three hundred dollars. So you can see what level of savings occurs for rebuilds. Wrong keyboard, pardon me. So really, the intent of this resolution before you all is to formulate the document, our affordable housing CET exemption policy, um, so that more folks can know about it and it's written and documented in writing. And as well as to set an expiration to that policy, recognizing that it's a rebuild specific policy. Um, you know, my recommendation is that we parallel what the school districts CET exemption deadline is, just to make it easier for homeowners to understand dates that are forthcoming. I do want to just let council know a quick recap of what rebuild progress has been, so you all just are aware of where we are in the process. Sixty-six percent of single-family homes have been issued a permit for rebuilding. Fifty-seven percent of our multifamily units, twenty-three percent of manufactured homes, sixteen percent of commercial structures. And the map you're seeing right now, the green dots represent any property that's been sold since the fire. And so counting just for that Burn Scar area, about a hundred and twenty burned parcels have been sold since the fire. Um, so the purpose, you know, of continuing to have this um, construction excise tax exemption um, is to help folks who are still planning on rebuilding be able to have those cost savings, but to also inform them well in advance of when it expires, so that they can make decisions that are best for them with a large enough timeline for them to be able to, to have the choice of when to rebuild. And with that, I will hand it over for any questions from the council.
Counsel Perry Miller.
Thank you. Um, I'm not quite sure how to phrase this. Um, Jordan, and I know you were not around when we made this motion, but um, I just remember that our intention was not to have this applied to properties that were sold and then rebuilt. And I'm just wondering if there's anything that could be done to like codify that?
Oh, one of, you know, one of the difficult things with this is, you know, applying policies to properties versus people. You know, and, and prior to Dave's addition to the team, you know, our city attorney saw some challenges for um, trying to apply this policy to the people and not to the property, if that makes sense. You know, if the goal is really, you know, to help get housing rebuilt post-fire, um, you know, this is one tool that's helping make that happen. You know, but one of the reasons I am sharing the, the number of parcels that have burned, or sorry, that have been sold that were burnt is just to help inform the council of kind of um, where we're at as a community in terms of shifting to that point where it's mostly new owners that are building housing in the Burn Scar area versus the original owners. Recognizing that that was the intent of the council, or the hope for the council is to support the folks who lost their homes or their businesses in that fire. Yeah, pardon me, mayor.
Go ahead.
I was gonna make sure that that addressed um, Counsel Perry Miller's question.
Yes, I certainly, I understand. Um, I guess I would just say I wish that we had phrased it differently at the time.
Counsel Clark.
Um, I guess I'm not totally clear. Um, so I'm just gonna ask, ask again and maybe, um, maybe if we could hear from Dave on this, but would it be legal, legally uh, appropriate, allowed uh, for the council to write a policy that applied only to the owners of a property on a certain date, September eighth, twenty twenty? Is that is that something that the city council could do?
Madam Mayor, do you want me to address that?
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry. Does any of the council object to? You know, this is a new thing, having, we're, we're being re. Reintroduced to having a.
We can, we can hear Dave. We can hear Dave.
Okay, addressing Counselor Clark's question and, and to some degree Counselor Perry Miller's question. Land use determinations run with the property, uh, not with the owner of the property. I have not uh, uh, had the opportunity to done any uh, research to verify that there's no way around that, but I suspect there is no way around that, and I think that was a determination that your previous city attorney made. I do think there might be a way uh, to uh, develop a conditional use process or a variance process that does address the particulars of people affected by the, directly affected by the fire. But I don't see a, a way um, in, in this um, resolution to um, make it dependent on who the person is, and, and there's a reason for that. It, if we made it just apply to the person, it would be fairly easy to find ways for people to have conditional sales, still retain their name on the title, but, but in effect, it would belong to somebody else um, later. And that kind of game playing, I don't think is what uh, anybody would want to encourage.
I'd like to add to this conversation a little bit, um, with uh, a little context, you know, um, Dave, because you weren't, you weren't um, part of this and, and Jordan and Kristen actually weren't either, but um, when talking about kind of the original intention was um, to provide this for folks that were trying to recover and rebuild and, and make sure that they weren't paying any, any hardships or undue burdens and um, and um, and we did have the discussion, um, and I don't recall um, an attorney determination. I'd like to see that. I think that would be um, important for the discussion if there is one. But it, the real, I mean, I think what I have problem with it is that if we had known, um, if there had been an, an attorney determination and it had been shared with us, I think what we would have done was try to adjust our thinking. At least I think I, what I would have done is to make sure that in some way the property owners who were selling the properties to developers understood they were selling the property with, with an, with a value that uh, is attached to it, and that's the value of not paying um, the additional CETs, the additional STCs. And, and I don't know what the average place was, was, um, was saving. Um, I keep trying to get to my project and uh, and it seems like I'm never gonna get there, but um, so I don't know what that, that would even mean for my property um, in terms of savings. But I just know that if I were selling my property to somebody who was developing, I'd want to know um, that they were not gonna have to pay any fees uh, because, because of the condition, uh, the conditions, it's my equity, because of my equity, and I would probably add that to the, the sales price. But um, so I think if, in the absence of being able to correct that, not having really gotten an attorney's determination and believing that that is how we were proceeding to some degree, I think we would want to try to. I think we would want to try to figure out a way to do that moving forward. And um I think uh we can have that discussion in in uh to a greater degree if that's what pleases the board at the next meeting. Um, because this is an item I have not been able to uh dive deep into uh just because of the late arrival of the agenda, but I I do hope that we do have an opportunity to explore how we can at minimum make sure um that folks know that um if they don't already know that they're they're passing on this added value uh when they sell the property to a developer, so those those are my thoughts. If we're not going to be able to fix what what didn't happen and there wasn't a attorney's determination, I I think there's some value in trying to at least explore that idea. Um, any other comments or questions? Counsel Clark?
Yeah, I uh, I wish I wish that um I had uh investigated this further early on and um I was clear on what, you know, my intentions were in that previous discussion. I think um they were shared intentions and um the fact that it was uh, you know, uh disappeared in the context of other business um before it was codified into policy and and knowledge that maybe our intention wasn't uh legally um appropriate, you know, uh wish I had investigated that early on um so that I understood that, but yeah, so uh but but in agreement with um the mayor's comments, you know, that's a that's a value that's associated with that property that's equity in that value in the in the property being sold and um those selling um should should know that and that and you know, have the opportunity to um incorporate that knowledge into their transaction. Um, just uh on a separate separate uh point, I'm looking at this graphic um. And we says here a hundred and twenty parcels um have been sold since the fire, but that's all over town, right? This is it's not a hundred and twenty parcels within the burn scar. It's in the it's in the city overall, right?
Thank you. Um, to clarify with you, Counsel Clark, that is a hundred and twenty within the burn scar. Um, so the green dots here don't represent, um, as you can see, a lot of sales happened outside of the burnt area. I went ahead and just counted up those that were in the burn scar in that one twenty.
Okay.
And the and the one twenty represents probably about thirty percent to forty percent of our burned parcels, just to help give you a sense of scope on that one.
Thirty to forty percent of parcels in the burn area have have.
Is my is my best guesstimate. Um, I do want to verify that with Nikki at GIS.
Okay.
I also just want to clarify from my earlier comments, I didn't mention well enough that um uh even though I said none of the staff members were here for that conversation, um I I in no way think uh that current staff for, you know, I mean, that you all are um at error in any way. I just hope that we find a positive way forward that um that satisfies some of the intention and um, um, you know, whether that's just communication or I don't know, but uh that's what I hope to get to at the next meeting. Jordan, did you have another comment?
Yes, and my comment actually aligns exactly with your mayor, yours, mayor. Um, you know, one of the reasons I'm bringing this resolution to you all is so that we can codify our practice into a written policy. Because it is much easier to A communicate what the policy is to others um as well as B make changes to that policy down the line. Um, you know, as staff, we fully recognize, you know, what the intent and desire is to help support folks that lost their homes or their businesses in the fire as well as to help our community recover. Putting this practice into a written um policy via resolution helps will help in that process as we make changes and adaptations moving forward. Um, so that would be really my request to you all of why why the resolution is beneficial in this moment, recognizing that the policy is not what was originally envisioned at the at the time that it began as practice.
All right, uh, well, thank you, um, everybody. Um, unless there's any other comments, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. And I just uh want to, you know, commend uh this my colleagues for their uh good hearts and their good intentions um and and appreciate entertaining this discussion to some degree and maybe moving forward. Counsel Penom, did you have something else on the last item?
Um, yeah, the last item, I think also the next item, it just um I was gonna ask Jordan to show us and and the the new format of the resolution that states the intent and everything. I'm I'm liking it very much. I I think that if I were gonna uh map it to the old format, the the declaration of the city would be the paragraph that used to say therefore be it resolved. Is that right?
I will have to look back at past templates.
It's fun to read that front. It's fun to say that thereby, therefore be it resolved.
It it is fun to say, and whereas a lot of times it's fun to say too.
A bunch of whereas is as many as you can get in there. Um, okay, moving on. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just I really appreciated. I don't know if you can screen share it, but I really appreciated um so so folks who don't have the packet in front of them um that the clarification of the intent of the resolution. I I like that a lot. Thank you.
And thank you, counselor. I will admit that I'm already struggling so much with two different screens and two different keyboards. I'm going to save that screen share until next meeting um to point that out. Thank you, counselor.
All right, item ten point four is resolution twenty-two dash zero five two dash R on zoning non-conformance for Almeida Fire rebuild staff report.
Yeah, I want to give the opportunity for any um needed expressions of conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest.
Uh, there's a potential conflict of interest for me. I own property in the Burn Scar, and I do want to add that I have um, I have applied for um. Um. I can't think of the name of it. My apologies. Uh, 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 to be determined, uh, to have a predetermination that I'm in a class of um property owners that uh were in the uh were in the fire, so um uh that would be a predetermination of the potential conflict of interest. So I'm still waiting for the determination. Uh, Counsel Penom.
Thank you. And as before, I um own property in the Burns Garden. I'm in the process of rebuilding.
Thank you all. Um, before I dive into the details, just to explain the map in front of you all, this is our zoning map. Um, anything in dark purple is residential or is multifamily high density. And the red outline is, my apologies, my hand drawing effort to show our burn scar on that zoning map. Um, so in the Almeida Fire, we lost a lot of our single family detached homes. And the majority of single family detached homes that were lost were in multiple family high density zoning. So within those dark purple zones. Um, those homes were considered illegal pre-existing structures, meaning they had been built um according to all of talent's current standards at the time of being built. Um, even though now the zoning has been changed to multiple fa- family high density, um, they are allowed as existing structures to stay there. Um, you know, since the Almeida Fire, the staff have been interpreting municipal such that replacement of single family dwellings in this high density zoning is allowable. Um, since those structures would have remained as existing structures, uh existing structures, if the fire would not have occurred. So this um practice was begun immediately after the fire and was presented to city council in February of twenty twenty-one. Um. And we have seen that, you know, a lot of folks have rebuilt as their single family detached dwellings um in that high density zoning, but we're also seeing a huge increase in density within within that area as well, primarily through ADUs, the splitting of lots and the and the creation of cluster home developments. So just like the last resolution, the intent of this resolution is just to formally document. Um, oh, sorry, I changed the language on that one, to formally document our practice into a written word policy and to set an expiration date for it um for the same reasons of of that were expressed in the last agenda item. You know, specific to multiple family high density. I don't know why that is a tongue twister for me every time. So three hundred and fourteen tax lots burned that were within that specific high density zoning. Of those, sixty eight percent have been issued building permits. And approximately five percent have been issued land use permits, but not yet building permits. And so we're estimating that there's approximately, you know, ninety or so tax lots that have not begun the rebuilding process. You know, what we're doing right now is we're looking into other policy approaches to um, you know, reach the intent of what city council would like to see, you know, potentially a variance or conditional use. Um, but in the meantime, we're looking to document this policy in writing as well as set an expiration date um to know that it is a rebuild policy um and non-ongoing city policy. And with that, I will turn it to the council for any questions. Oh, mayor, I think you're muted right now.
Wow. I can't even remember what I just said. Um, no, uh, I I any questions I had, I just asked, but I do look forward to talking about this in greater um detail after having some time with the resolution. Um, Counsel Penom.
Yeah, just a a quick question. So um, you know, I think, for example, um, there are areas that that are high density that you can still have a single family house. It just it it doesn't mean necessarily you can't. It's just that they there's one very, very close together. And those still count as as high density and those would be in performance if they were built brand new today, right?
Do I have that right? Turn the mic. I'm gonna turn the mic over to Kristen to double check.
So yes, that would be uh an attached single family dwelling is permitted in the in the high density.
Thanks.
Yeah. Counsel Clark?
Yeah, I would um I would be uh curious to get more information about um the origin of the uh interpretation of uh, you know, burn structures um being considered pre-existing um and how that came about. I know it was a it was a extremely busy time um as we were trying to process permits and I was one of the one of the uh counselors volunteering to go in and process those permits, but I would just be curious to get uh more information about about how that came about. Um, and this is, you know, parallel uh parallel, but different issue from the previous agenda item. And again, the intent was um, you know, to not penalize uh someone whose home burned from rebuilding what they had. I've and and so I feel uh I feel a little uncomfortable with um you know, with properties changing hands and um and a developer um uh taking advantage of the opportunity to build a single family home in what we have thoughtfully uh rezoned as as high density um because that's uh the kind of new development that we want in those areas. But those are just a couple of uh a couple of preliminary thoughts um right now, and I'll leave it there.
Yeah, thank you, counselor. And I would like to just add some additional information. So looking through the historic record of these conversations to try to find the origin and where this came from, December second, twenty twenty um is when it was first discussed with council. And so I will go ahead and send you all those meeting minutes as well as city recording um for you all to review, but that was the earliest mention that I found in for this specific like-for-like zoning non-conformance topic. The other thing that I've written down to to get together before council's next discussion on this topic is to look into of the properties that have sold. How many have been sold after they were rebuilt and how many were sold before they were rebuilt? Um, just to help provide some context around what's actually going on on the ground um could add to the conversation as well.
That's great. Any other comments? All right, uh, so um let's go ahead and entertain a motion to postpone these two I are yes, these three items uh to a date certain. Counsel Penom.
Yeah, I moved to um postpone items uh ten point two, ten point three and ten point four uh to the next regular council meeting.
That's on the sixteenth, right? Yep, okay.
I guess.
Yeah. Fourteen days. We have a motion and a second to postpone item ten point two, ten point three and ten point four uh to um November sixteenth. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penem.
Yes.
Counselor Greater.
Yes.
Counselor Pesteas has exited the meeting. Counselor Perry Miller.
Yes.
Washington cares, mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, uh, Dave and Jordan for um reviewing those items and and letting us take a little more time with them. We appreciate that patience. Um, I know you put a lot of work into it. Item number eleven is committee and commission. Uh, Counsel Penom, did you have a comment?
Yeah, did we have an executive session tonight?
Yeah, it's coming up. I'm trying to get to it.
Okay.
Item number fourteen.
Yeah. Oh, that's fourteen. Okay, um, it's just, uh, yeah, I just think a time check. Um, we have till till nine thirty and then we have to extend the meeting. Okay, great. Thank you.
Moving here.
Okay.
Um, thank you. Um, so uh any committee and commission reports that couldn't wait till the next meeting? Great. Um, item number twelve is other business or future agenda items. Counsel, do you have anything for future agenda or other? Thank you. How about uh staff? No, all right. Item number thirteen is there's uh no written communications. Item number fourteen is executive session. Uh, and I see Anne Marie is with us. Anne Marie, thank you so much for coming out uh late at night on a rainy Wednesday night. Um, we appreciate it. Uh, and this is where having a Zoom meeting is really, really helpful for somebody who's uh offices in Central Point. So for the audience, Anne Marie is with RV Cog. Uh, she's the executive director, serving as our HR um consultant. Um, she previously actually was our HR consultant and was uh elevated very appropriately to the executive director position. Um, and as they are on a search for a new uh HR can uh HR um specialist at RV Cog, uh she's filling the role. So we're so glad to have you back. Um, we love Jody, uh, but we love you too. So um, we love the great service that you give us. Um, so with that, uh, the council will meet in an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero parentheses two parentheses I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any body, uh, any public body, a public officer, employee or staff member who does not request an open hearing to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Um, so uh Hector, can you give us a real brief on how we're gonna migrate over to executive session and what that's gonna look like?
Uh, I do believe Jordan uh is uh sending out. Uh, I do believe Jordan uh is uh sending out the meeting invite now to your email.
Great.
So just to let folks know, council will be clicking on a separate Zoom link for them to enter into a separate Zoom meeting. For folks who would like to stay on, um, we will be coming back to this link to report out what was um. If any decision, although notice will be made, but what was done in the meeting. Um, I will say that I did put this at the very end of the agenda for those folks who wanted to return to their evenings. Council Penamriff, do you have a question?
Yeah, for some reason, my email is not, uh, my council email isn't opening. Um. So I know that seems to be working. I was wondering if um you could like individually or. Or put it just for just for the participants in the chat. Yeah, I don't know. To. Thank you.
Of course.
Great, thanks.
Jordan, can you take a quick look and see if the 10 o'clock deadline is per the bylaw, uh, per the council rules or the charter?
Yeah.
Um, and then, um, I think we're just waiting on, uh, Eleanor, um, at 9:30, we need to make a motion to extend the meeting, um, and we're, you know, having to produce links and get over here. So if we're running a little behind, uh, our apologies, but, um, we're gonna, uh, come out of, we're out of executive session at this time. But we're gonna come out of, we're out of executive session at this time. And only to come in and make a motion to extend the meeting. I, I can't, I can't, I think it's in the council rules. I don't think it's in the charter.
I just look for the charter. So it's the council rules. I'll look for the specific.
It is in the charter or is not?
It is not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall it being in the charter. So the fact that it's in the council rules means we can relax those rules and extend it for as time as needed. So we would need a motion to relax the rules and then, and, and then extend the meeting as needed. The rules require us to end the meetings at 10:00. So we want to go beyond 10:00. We need to relax the rules, a motion to relax the council rules, and then a motion to extend as needed. I hope, I, I hope that I made sense. Okay, so Counselor Panamriff, is that you? Are you audible?
Um, I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes, okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I make a motion?
Uh, it looks like Counselor Clark's gonna make that motion. Counselor Clark?
Yes, I move to relax the rules concerning the meeting end time.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to relax the rules about the end time. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Panamriff.
Yes.
Counselor Greider.
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll entertain another motion to extend the meeting. Anybody want to raise their hand? Counselor Clark?
I move to extend the meeting as late as necessary to complete the business on the agenda.
We have a motion, and we have a motion and a second to extend the meeting as needed. Is there any further discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Panamriff.
Yes.
Counselor Greider.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. If I would have thought of this ahead of time before we went in, I would save this, uh, this journey back and forth. So just for everybody to know, we're gonna go back into executive session. 192.660 parentheses 2i. So we're gonna follow this link in the chat. And will that take us out of this meeting automatically, Jordan? Okay, great.
So we're out of executive session. There were no decisions made. If, let me just take a quick gander at the. So that concludes executive session, item number 14. The next one is on 15, was to reconvene and report out, which I just did. And then the next item is item number 16. Is there anything before I close out this meeting? Okay, this meeting is adjourned at 10:05. Thank you, everybody, for your extra time tonight.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.